Okay Chair Grunder, we're live.
All right, thank you Sheri. Good morning everyone, welcome to the Special Committee on Intercollegiate Athletics. Today is Tuesday, June the 1st, 2021. We call this meeting to order. I want to take this opportunity to welcome each and every one of you, Madam Secretary, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Fecker.
Here.
Mr. Platt.
Here.
Ms. Whiteside.
Ms. Whiteside.
Here.
Mr. Grunder.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Conflict of interest statement. It is of utmost importance to ensure that all university decisions are free from any real or perceived conflicts of interest. Therefore, please be mindful of all obligations with which you have been charged as a trustee of Wright State University and take the steps you deem appropriate to perform your duties fairly and impartially. This meeting has been called by written notification, a quorum I believe is present. Let me read another chairman's statement here. The Wright State University Board of Trustees is a public body, subject to the Ohio Open Meetings Act. It operates on a fixed agenda available to those attending the meetings. Persons wishing to address the board in its public session should submit a written request to the Board of Trustees office 72 hours in advance of the meeting in order to be placed on the agenda. However, all persons address the board at the invitation of the board and are subject to time limitations and other guidelines established to maintain the good order of the meeting. The approval of the minutes is the first thing to address here. Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions from our April 6th, 2021 meeting? Any discussion we need to have there? Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from April 6th that submitted?
Trustee Platt motion.
Is there a second?
Trustee Fecker, second.
All right. There being none, the motion passes here. Or I guess I have to say, all in approval of the distributed minutes, correct? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say no. Motion passes. Okay, couple comments here just before we get started. I want to reiterate some of the things that we mentioned when we had the first meeting. The purpose of an athletics program is to enhance and contribute to a university's overall mission. Enriching the platform from which student success is achieved. But athletics are a university program just like any other. And as such, it is the responsibility of the Board of Trustees and administration to periodically evaluate athletics just as it evaluates the broad range of programs that exist on a modern American campus. As you all know, Wright State University is currently evaluating many of its programs, given recent enrollment trends. Both academic and non-academic, and this committee's review of athletics is part of the board's overall evaluation. We have great programs at Wright State University, and this committee has no preconceived notions. We will do what's best for the present and future of Wright State University. Please continue to give us the benefit of the doubt, and know we are all in this together. I want to recognize the Wright State University baseball team, which won a Horizon League championship over the weekend. They are now going on to the NCAA's regionals in Knoxville. We wish them the best of luck. They're an outstanding group of young men led by coach Alex Sogard. And I want to congratulate them. And then I would be remiss if I also didn't recognize trustee Whiteside. She is at the University of Virginia. She is a Wright State alumni. We are blessed to have Brittany on our committee here to help us. We're blessed to have her as a national trustee. And at the University of Virginia, they just won a tennis national championship. And yesterday, won a lacrosse national championship. That's a major accomplishment, and trustee Whiteside, we're thrilled for you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
So, the next point here is to go through this, and we are governed by the way these things work, to have an open discussion here. So, what I wanted to do was turn it over to the rest of the trustees. I believe you've had, you've been given copies of the five proposals that were submitted to us. I'd like to have an open discussion conversation here about how we go about coming to an agreement on a couple of these, maybe we want to bring in for an in-person interview. Do we do it on Zoom? Help me out, let's open up the discussion. Any comments?
Yeah Marty, I think that today, I think we could call the meeting successful if we could decide on two finalists to invite back for interviews. Because I think, in some areas of the proposals, I want to understand better their process. One example, I think one of the most important pieces of information we're going to get is regarding the financial aspects of an athletics program. And there are a dozen ways to look at the financial aspects, just depending on which one you choose. And so I want to understand their method. You know, as an example, one thing I want to see is just the cash flow, hard dollars in from athletics and hard dollars out on athletics. There are other softer dollar costs that should be considered, or maybe should be considered, I don't know. I want to understand how they do that work. So, for example, you know, ticket sales and those types of things, hard dollars in, coaches' salaries, hard dollars out. There are costs of tuition paid by non-scholarship athletes, hard dollars in. Is there a cost? I want to understand how they assign cost of having our scholarship athletes attend classes, because you know, an argument can be made that if an athlete attends a class that we were going to have anyway, the marginal cost of that attendance is essentially zero. But there may be hard dollar costs involved that I just want to understand. So I really want to understand how they go about doing the financial analysis. Because in the end, I think that's going to be really important information for us to have. There's other areas that I want to talk to them more about. So from my, just my perspective, I'll obviously go along with whatever the committee decides. I think we should get two finalists and have them come back. I know that extends the process a little bit, but we should be really confident that the process that whoever we choose is going to follow will give us the information we need to make this decision. And I just want to understand how they do some of those things a little bit. So that's my input.
Thank you. Duly noted. Two finalists and the hard dollar costs here. I understand what you're saying. Trustee Platt or trustee Whiteside, any comments, anything you want to add?
Yes, this is trustee Whiteside, just confirming you all can hear me, okay?
We can hear you.
Okay, perfect. I agree with that. I'm between two to three. I think that the financial analysis is important. It's really hard to review this on paper and have a really good understanding of how they go about their process. And I think some of them laid out what to expect better than others, and so there's just some questions that I have there. And I think that each of them probably look at some of the key areas when you're talking about the financial analysis, scholarship. You know, what that looks like for departments. They did an organizational structure review. So I think that there are some commonalities here. I think that the experiences of the group and and other institutions they work with that are similar to ours will be really important. But to me, I think it could go to two to three, just looking on paper at the process. And what I saw that was valuable was, like with the collegiate sport associates, they really laid out the process. And I had a really good understanding of what to expect, and even delved in a little bit into what to expect after they provided the report and any continued support that would be necessary. So I really like how they laid that out. And then we just have some companies here that have administrators and people that are part of it that have just vast experience in college athletics. And so I think that it's hard to read it on paper and get a good sense for that without talking to. For me, I think I could, you know, two to three, I could probably pull three out of here that I would like to have further conversations with before making a decision.
Thank you trustee Whiteside. Anything you want to add trustee Platt?
Yeah, I mean, I think, to me, honestly, I feel like I'm going to lean on Brittany. We have a national trustee for a reason, and this is a lot more her wheelhouse than it is mine. I went through all of them. It seemed like one or two, for different reasons, I'm like, those don't seem like a fit. But I agree that it seems impossible to pick one today without
Right.
getting a little more information. So I think if we can dwindle it down to two to three, that would be great, and then go from there.
Okay. I don't, I mean, my personal opinion, I don't know that it's... Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right. Something is going crazy here on my... Sorry folks. Technical difficulties. I don't think it's worth arguing over having three. So trustee Fecker, are you okay with that?
Yeah, and the thing I would say is, I don't know if we should wait until the next regularly scheduled meeting for the interviews. If we can find, I would imagine each interview would be about an hour long, so we're going to have to spend some time on it. I would hope we can do that without waiting another month.
And I agree with you.
We don't want to drop that out.
Trustee Whiteside?
Agreed.
All right.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, thank you. Then I would say, do we want to have a discussion right now on the top three in your reviews? And I can go last.
Trustee Grunder, am I correct that we received five collegiate sports solutions, collegiate sports associates, MRJ, Pictor, and collegiate consulting?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that is correct. That's the five that we got. Mr. Sample, is that correct? Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Yes, and Marty, I'll verify that those are the ones that I posted in the attachment for the board meeting today, that those are the five names of the firms.
And this is fluid, so if someone has a recommendation on how you want to go about this, but I would vote for us submitting our top three and see if we can get some consensus there and have some discussion. If trustee Whiteside, you know, there's no playbook for this, I'm learning as we go as well. If trustee Whiteside has some experience, or Doug, I know you've spent a lot of time researching this. It's an open discussion, I'm just here to facilitate. So please feel free to speak up.
Well, the first one I would invite in for an interview is collegiate consulting group. And again, full disclosure, they were the one that I talked about the last time we had. So I have talked to them, and I was impressed with them on the phone. But I would like to have them come back to answer some questions regarding their proposal. So I'd start with that one and see if my fellow committee members agree that that would be one that we would bring back.
So I'll just, so that one was probably the one that had the least amount of detail in terms of the presentation. So that wasn't one of the three that I considered. I thought, yeah, I had questions that I think they referenced. I don't know, like the Big Sky Conference, like some other things in their proposal, if we're looking at the same one. So I think that that's just one that I had, that I did not have. I don't even want to say top three, but it wasn't one of the ones where I had some key questions in regards to moving forward with. I think I mentioned the one which was collegiate sport associates. I really liked the proposal that they had. So that would be one that I would recommend we speak to.
Yeah, and Brittany, I completely understand that, but probably I'm influenced more by the fact that I've talked to them once. But I would agree with your assessment of the overall proposal. And again, I also like collegiate sports associates, probably for the same reasons that you did.
Yeah, I would say Doug, I had the same thought. Again, I did not speak to collegiate consulting, so I just saw the PowerPoint. But they had the little things, but there's only so much you can look at when you're looking at five PowerPoints. But they had the wrong university. They had Northwood University or something, and they had Big Sky instead of Horizon. So I was turned off by two errors, but obviously I trust your opinion that if you spoke to them and were impressed, then they should, you know, be at the table at least.
Well, again, I'm trying to approach it with an open mind. If you all have two that you like better than that, I I can see bringing three in, you know, but it shouldn't be more than that. I was hoping we could bring two in, but I'm happy to bring three in.
For what it's worth, I had CSA as one of my top ones. So I think we've got one here that we've been agreement on, and now we're just down to two more. Or if we just want to go one more, let's just keep talking. So to me, we call CSA in for sure, and now we need one or two more.
And then I'll just say, like with MRJ, I do know the individual that does this. He, you know, I think very highly of him. And so he was longtime athletic director, and so I know that he does good work. I've never worked with him in this space, in this capacity. So, but I was impressed with the proposal and how it was laid out as well. So I don't know if others had thought on MRJ.
Yeah, I mean, I thought MRJ, again, what I was looking at, seemed like a good proposal. Maybe we can go the other way too. Collegiate sports solutions, I think the first one we saw, I mean, they looked just fine, but it was also by far the most expensive. So I don't know if we maybe can eliminate that one. Again, if we're dwindling this down to two, not that I like to go on cost all the time, but they were significantly more expensive than the rest.
They were.
What were your thoughts on the Pictor group? I would agree that eliminating them, the other one is the Pictor group. And I'm bringing it back up to remind myself what was in it.
I like how they had the phased approach. I think they laid out their process well in this. They have former administrators involved in this as well. So I thought they laid out the process well. For me, I was just really probably between MRJ, collegiate sport associates, and then also looking at Pictor group as well. It's just really hard to review it on paper and be able to come away with some of the key things that we probably need to without getting in front of them and asking more questions. So maybe that's the third group, if there are three that we want to talk to.
And Chair Grunder, I'll just mention for possible consideration that there has been times when we have gone back out to vendors with a set of similar questions. So it is possible, and I see our head of purchasing is coming on that it's possible if you had, you know, three, and you still want to narrow it to two, that you could come up with the same questions and ask for some additional information, just as another possibility.
Again, I'm facilitating a discussion here. I want to do what's best for Wright State. My top three were MRJ, CSA, and CSS. CSS was the high price, and I understand eliminating them. So it sounds like we have a bit of a consensus on MRJ and CSA. You know, I don't know if Matt has joined us, you know, what is appropriate here. I certainly want to make sure we handle this process right, and I'm not an expert at procurement and securing contracts like this.
Good morning, everybody. I am on the call now. I apologize for delay. I'm not fully up to speed yet on the conversation that's happened to this point. But generally speaking, we did give ourselves the flexibility to have follow-up conversations with one or more of the proposers. If that's what you choose to do, whether that's a formal presentation or some other format, we can pursue that. And then again, I would suggest maybe having two or three at the most, just for efficiency sake. So it sounds like maybe the committee has identified those two or three.
I think we've identified two.
Right.
The CSA and MRJ.
Right.
Is that correct?
I'd agree with that. Yeah.
Yeah. And to me, just, you know, the things that I'm looking for personally, I think there's two or three really important areas that we need help with. You know, overall, the value of an athletics program to a university is real. It's substantial. But a lot of it is intangible. It's really hard to put, for lack of a better term, a dollar value on some of those intangible benefits. So I think one of the things we're looking for in a consultant is to help us understand, you know, kind of the elements of intangible value from a variety of different points of view. You know, we talked this morning, just this morning, about the success of the baseball team, right? That creates an intangible value. But how do we value that in the long run? The financial stuff is also important. But understanding that all the different ways there are to look at that, as I already talked about earlier, is important also. There's, you know, how do we put all of those things together? And then for me, it's really important, the depth of the discussions that they'll go into with the various stakeholders at the university that I think most of the proposals talked about, you know, the finding out what are the attitudes and kind of the feelings about athletics at Wright State University among all of our different stakeholding groups. And many of these proposals listed a lot of them. I think those are the most important things for me personally to get to the bottom of. So I was looking for, in the proposals, the company that could help us the most with that. With those three things, kind of assessing the intrinsic value of an athletics program, the real financial implications of it. But really, the attitudes and inputs of the community of Wright State University towards the athletics. And because ultimately, we need to take, whatever we do, it's just like you said at the beginning Marty. The athletics program, like any other program at the university, has to support the university's mission. And so who can help us and has the most experience with that? So I'm comfortable with the two that you all put out there. I don't have to go with my favorite by any means. That's the beauty of group thinking, so.
I guess the other, the other comment to make, not to overcomplicate this, but when I looked at all the proposals, to me, the three best proposals were CSA, MRJ, and CSS. CSS is the highest price. I understand we're watching our pennies, and we need to be very careful. But we also want this process done right. And I think if you look at their proposal, the credentials and the way it was laid out. Maybe it makes sense to throw it out because of cost, but I wonder if maybe if we were going to interview three, we interview those three and see what we glean from CSS and look at it that way. That's just another, that's just a thought I had.
Hey Marty, this is Bill. I'm not a member of the committee, but I just would offer, you know, there's an old saying, you get what you pay for. Does that possibly apply here?
Yeah, it could. I don't know. Right.
Well, and so they look to be at $10,000 to $20,000 more than the other ones. I think they were 65 grand, and the others were 50 or 45 or something like that. So it may make sense to bring them in as a third. And then that's one of their, you know, cons, is that they're the most expensive.
Well, that's what I, that's what I was thinking Doug, and have them justify the investment.
I'm fine with that. I don't usually go by price. I just, it's different when you're
Right.
working at a university, but I wouldn't be against adding them as a third.
Well, that's the challenge, trustee Platt. I think you hit it right on the head. That may be what we didn't want to say, but that's the challenge. Well said. Trustee Whiteside, any comments on that?
No, I am okay moving forward with that. I think there's going to be a lot of value out of having a conversation with each of them and being able to ask those key questions. So I don't think we need to narrow down anything else right now, but I look forward to moving forward with it.
And trustee Grunder, just one thing, I definitely agree Doug with your three. I just would add a fourth that I would hope they would also show us potential opportunities that we're maybe not leveraging. So the analysis and the three things that Doug said, right on, but I would hope a fourth would be, you know, what are some opportunities that the university athletics is not capturing, if there is any? So I would hope they would be able to bring us some of those as well.
Andy, I think that's a very important point. And, you know, again, in talking to the one group I talked to, they did talk about that. And, you know, there has been universities that have raised revenue by adding certain sports to the program that have lower costs, less scholarships, more tuition. I've heard lacrosse is one, but I don't know. Maybe we could compete with Virginia here soon. But you're right, that's what I think you're talking about, right, is, are there ways of, I hate to use the word change, but evolving the program to where it continues to meet the mission, or better meets the mission, but is more... Oh, I think you all know what I'm saying. I would like to ask Greg and other administrators who've seen the proposals, did you, what did you think? Did you see anything that jumped out at you regarding the proposals?
Concur with the comments that were provided today, although Doug, I would say the same as you. The collegiate consulting group, we actually had actual time with over the phone in a WebEx. They have a depth of knowledge, but to Andy's point, my personal opinion, when you're making your proposal to somebody, you should at least take the time to get the facts straight in your proposal. So if they're not doing that, then that shows kind of a lack of depth in terms of their technical proficiency. But the other ones, absolutely, they're all good.
Well, I think we should keep it to the three, and now they're all running together, all the acronyms.
CFS.
CSA and CSS.
Yes.
And so Doug, I missed the third point. I have down right now, in terms of our follow-up communication to the proposers, will be, we need to understand more how you approach the value proposition, the tangible and intangible costs related to the operation of the program. Your approach to the depth of discussion with stakeholders, and how you involve yourself in that. What was your third point?
The pure, one was the financial costs, basically really, how do they do that, given the fact that there's hard dollar and soft dollar costs?
Yep.
Kind of the attitudes and insights of the campus community from all the different stakeholding groups. What do they, you know, how do they view our athletics program? And, gosh, you caught me too quick, Greg. The third one had to do with, I'll remember it in a second.
So I had a financial aspect, cash flow, value of the athletics program, particularly on the intangibles. Depth of discussion with the stakeholders or the attitudes, and then the show us your opportunities, our opportunities that we might not be leveraging.
Right, that was the third one Sheri, was just how do we assess the intangible value of an athletics program to a university? The things that you can't really put a dollar value on, or you can't easily put a dollar value on. So, you know, with all the reading that we've done, clearly the value of an athletics program to university is reputational. It can embellish that, but how do you value that in the end? You know, the other way to ask the question is, what do you lose if you don't have certain things at a campus? And that's not related just to athletics, it's almost anything that we could do at the university. What do you lose by not having it? What do you gain by having it? And how do you look at those intangible values to the university?
Got it. So Chairman Grunder, if you would like to summarize, we can reach back out to those three organizations specifically. We can communicate with them on the priority areas that the group would like to have a discussion with them about. We would ask them to submit something in writing in advance of the meeting. We'll give them 15 minutes on the front end of a presentation to address those items, and then the last 45 minutes with the committee, each will be a Q and A.
I think that sounds great, and I think if the other trustees will conclude here with me, try to do that in the next couple of weeks, if it's at all possible.
So a couple of things I'd offer. One, Greg, if they have any samples of any survey instruments that they use for the campus community, at least one of the proposals, you know, would survey, for example, the entire student body. Can they show us in advance of the meeting some of the samples of the questions, because they might lead us to other questions that could be helpful? And I wonder, if given everybody's busy schedule Marty, should we all pick a Saturday to do this on, where we can get it done in the next couple of weeks? I respect everybody's time, but I know my schedule, and this is going to be a four-hour meeting, if we're going to give each one of the three an hour, and then an hour for kind of...
Yep. And I agree with that, and I'm willing to make a Saturday morning available for that. It's fine with me. Trustee Whiteside, trustee Platt?
Yeah, I think the timing works for me. Yeah, I, I think the, the timing works for me. I, I would just add, like, I think it's really important that we understand their, their process of gathering the information. And so I think that to include that in something that they, that they present to us would be really important. So, so not just the surveys of the campus community, but how do they gather all of this information? What are the resources that they are going to use to gather this? It's something that I'm really interested in, because I think the process is really important. And I think all of them have different timelines laid out. So I really want to have a really good understanding of the process in which they're going to, they're going to go about in order to present us with the, the final report.
That, that makes sense to me, Trustee Whiteside. Trustee Whiteside, is there anything else in your experience in this arena that you would care to share with us? I, I want to, obviously, we all want to try to do this in the best possible way. Is there anything you think we're overlooking, aside from what you just mentioned?
Oh, I don't think so. I, I think it's going to be important to know who a contact is for, for whomever we move forward with. They're going to have to have someone that'll be, you know, their contact to help them, help facilitate this process. It will probably, once we get to that point, need to just define what this looks like moving forward. Once we've selected the group that will assist us with this.
A little bit presumptuous on my part, but Trustee Fecker, would you be interested in being that point person on this? You, you have a very good understanding of this. Is that something you would have the time and interest in doing?
If the committee agrees, I'm happy to do it.
Trustee Whiteside, Trustee Platt?
Sure. And to be clear, my role is to just coordinate with those companies
Right.
and gather information, nothing beyond that. Just almost be a point person for them to talk to if they have questions.
Exactly.
Yeah. And, and we'll likely need a point person in the athletics department as well. But we, we should rely on them to tell us what they need to help facilitate it, and then go from there. They will probably have a model in which they use with other campuses that they would recommend for us to move forward.
All right. Sheri, make sure we note that in the, in the notes about having a model that we form, because I wasn't even thinking about that. When we start to do this, we've, we're going to have to be very organized in our approach with that as well. Trustee Whiteside, Trustee Platt, Trustee Fecker, anything else? I mean, that was the, the main thing of what I wanted to try to determine in today's meeting. Am I missing anything? Help me out.
So it, it, it sounds like we've made two decisions today. One is to invite MRJ, CSS, and
CSA.
And CSA in for interviews. We would hope to have those in another week or two, possibly on a Saturday, and that the committee has asked me to be a, a kind of a point person for coordinating information exchanges. Brittany's point of having somebody from athletics do that also. Although I'd leave that up to Greg. Greg, you decide who on the administration side might be a point person. And then we'll move forward. That, that's what I understand we've done today?
That's my summation of it. Trustee Platt, Trustee Whiteside, Mr. Sample, can you help me out? And Matt, if you want to comment, please do so.
Makes sense.
I, I think we're good. I think we're clear on our path here. Sheri will get the notes out. We'll figure out, probably via doodle poll or one of those ones where we can make an agreement on a Saturday and try to get this moving. I don't think there's anything else. Any further business for the Board of Trustees? Going once? Going twice? All right. Hearing none, I move to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you, everyone. Have a nice week.
Thank you, Marty.
Thanks, Marty.
Greg, you can take us down.